All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting in order. Are we on here?
Yep.
I've asked Councilman Smith to lead us in prayer and plugs today.
Lord, thank you for this day, and thank you for watching over and being with us. We ask you to watch over us tonight and make our plans and make decisions for the future. In this name of prayer, amen. We have intention, salute, praise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a roll call?
Lamar.
Here.
Shropshire.
Here.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Chris Shears.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Trammell.
Here.
Campey. Smith.
Here.
Okay, I have no additions from the audience. Do you have the oath for that?
Oh, I thought you did it outside.
No. Okay, we'll do that. We'll do the item two, we'll do that at the end. I'll get us pull that up. Again, no petitions from the audience, we'll go ahead and start with our department head reports. Building inspector says did forty-six inspections, no cause some issues with inspections, worked James coding him up on those issues. Had several houses for abatement that he attended the abatement meeting, reviewed plans for remodels of new home buildings, and several homeowners, contractors calling, came in to the office needing information on codes in the zones. Emergency management?
Only thing I wanted to report is last year, we talked about this a little bit, but we was going to change our company that we use, our mass notification through the Code Red system, and it didn't work out the way our contract was written. It's through the county, but the county covers it for everybody, but the way it was written, we couldn't get out of the contract last year, we had to pay for another year, so it is coming up due again, so this time, we're gonna get this accomplished, and we're gonna be changing to a company called Hyperreach. The main reason that we're making this change is Code Red did not allow for us to send out what they call iPaus messages, so basically, if you have a cellphone, you had to go on the website and sign up to get messages. You still need to do that with the new system, but for people that are travelers or someone that did not set up life safety messaging, we can go ahead and send out, and it'll hit a cell tower, and any fun within that reach, that cell tower will get the message. So that's what I wanted the Code Red system to do, they were just not gonna be able to accomplish that, so we're gonna have to make the change to the new one. So as soon as I get all the procedures on how to get everybody set up on it, probably in the next month or two, I'll bring it to you and be sending that out.
Did, has anybody from G R D A reached out to you on the siren that they're proposing at Langley about trying to get it interoperability on that?
They have.
Okay, just to make sure.
Yeah, it's been a while, though.
Okay, all right.
You might ask them again.
I'll ask, thank you.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Thank you. Fire?
Well, we made it through all that weather, so I'm just happy for that, so we got through there, the guys are back at the stations, just getting everything cleaned back up, stuff repaired, that weather, you don't think about it, but running those trucks, it's hard on them out there, isn't it? So they're making the repairs, getting everything cleaned back up, getting everything good and ready to go back in service, but we're just enjoying the weather we got now, so that's what we're doing.
Have already moved ones?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they actually, they went over and got some dirt, they were hauling dirt over next door, so they got some dirt and kinda dressed up some of the yard around there at the new station, filled some holes up, and made it where it's not so bumpy maybe on the lawn mower come summertime. Got anything for me?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Golf?
Good evening, everyone. Of course, the golf course is still doing really good despite, you know, a pretty rough January and February, but we, the last fiscal year, I think our revenue was like seven hundred ninety-one thousand, and we're trending like about eighty-seven above that right now, so we're even after about a ten thousand dollar difference in February, so our finances, I think, are still really good, so we're doing some good things out there, and it's a lot of fun. Our guys have, we've got all of our equipment in good shape, spent the last two months, of course, that gave us more time to work inside, and so all the equipment's sharp, ready to go, won't be long, the grass will be growing. They're doing really good on the cart pass, you know, the weather's kinda been a challenge for them also, but they're doing really good, they're gonna asphalt the parking lot tomorrow, and so that's going along really good, those guys are really good to work with. We've got all of our spraying done at the golf course, pretty much, and the only thing I probably will have to do is get with the soccer fields and ball fields and get those sprayed out, so they don't have to deal with a lot of weeds, if they still want me to, so. Our events, we got March ninth, which is this Sunday, we have U S kids, it's a hundred and twenty kids coming from all over the place, and the neat thing about the U S kids tournaments is that the parents or whoever they want get to caddy for them, we have grandparents caddying kids, you know.
Get a city counselor that gets to do, carry golf bags on.
There you go, right, so there's one right there, so we do have handful of local kids playing in it, so that's really good, but it shows you, we have a lot of people coming from out of town, and we'll have a lot of them come in Saturday and play practice rounds and then play Sunday, so that's gonna be a fun event, it's always good to see all them kids out there playing. March twenty-ninth, we're doing a fundraiser golf tournament for the Hilldale golf team in Port, in Muskogee, so, and April's gonna be crazy busy, we got a lot of high school events and just a lot of tournaments, Brown and Brown, Special Olympics, and so April's gonna be a very busy hunt, so we're just trying to get ready, it's gonna be nice to have all the cart pass done, parking lot, so we'll have a lot better image out there, so, any questions?
It does look really good out there, did they start on the parking lot today?
They worked on it yesterday, and they were preparing it.
Okay.
And of course, it rained today, and they didn't do anything.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
And then on their bridges, what is, what is that looking like?
So I did talk to Mr. Cowan, and they're all ready, he's gonna meet with me about, we gotta figure out how to get some cranes in and out, out there, and so the first two we're gonna be able to do without doing any concrete work or anything like that, and then the other three, we're probably gonna have to bid out some concrete work on those.
He's got those on his lot.
Yeah, they're all done, sitting out there, ready to go, so.
I just, we think they'll be installed by summer?
Yeah, but, you know, two of them, we can do probably before our next fiscal year starts, but the other ones, we may have to do those in July, one because the ground's gonna be hard, it takes, I think he said, seventy-ton crane to put one of them in.
Hundred-ton, he was, he played behind me last week when we were talking about it, so a hundred-ton, he said, for number two.
Yeah, it's a matter of getting it dry enough to get that out there, and then also having the money budgeted for that concrete work.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie with the library.
I emailed you guys our fanciest statistics sheet, we had fifty-seven new library accounts created in February, if you look at the difference between this February and last February, it's a very huge difference, we had two hundred and forty-three last February, but that was from the Thunderbird Youth Academy, and their situation has gotten a little complicated, so I don't know if they're going to continue coming to the library like they were, we hope so, 'cause it was our favorite day, but we're not in charge of their logistics. Physical checkouts, about twenty-three hundred, digital checkouts, twenty, almost twenty-six hundred, we answered nine thousand questions, anyway, it was a good month, it was February. Things to note, the Friends group is putting on a very small fundraiser, it's called the Author Roundup, it does not bring in much money, but it does bring in as many local, either traditionally published or self-published authors as we can find, last year, we did it, it was our first year to do it, and we had twenty-six authors, including some people in this very room, and so we're gonna do it again, and then that should be April seventeenth, the Thursday before Good Friday, and also, I saw, we had our canopy on the west side of the building, by the children's entrance was, it was very sad, and so it got happier today, it got a new ceiling, so it's not gonna sag and drip on your face, but yeah, do you guys have anything for me?
Carrie, will you explain, when you talk about the nine thousand questions you answered last month?
Yeah.
What those questions are?
Sure.
Well over three hundred a day for anybody doing the math.
It is.
What are we answering?
So they fall into two categories, there's either informational, directional, which are the very short ones, like where's your bathroom, what are your hours, that kinda thing, and then there are the reference questions, which take longer to answer, there are things like, tell me what book you would recommend that I read next, and so there's a longer conversation for that, or if you're just now starting on your genealogy and you need help with the computers, that's a reference question, so, and it's mostly informational, directional questions that we're answering, the little short ones, but we get enough of the reference ones that we are, we are pretty busy, and especially, I mean, you know how kids are, so when we have lots of kids in the building, our youth services department is answering lots and lots and lots of questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Parks and cemetery.
We just got back today from vacation, so I'm just going off what the guys told me they'd done. I know before the vacation, it was the snow on the ground, so it's a lot of in the shop stuff, did go help Buddy and them clean off the parking lots and stuff like that, and last week, I guess they started firing up things, bathrooms open, getting ready for the mowing season, and got the tennis courts, they've started this week doing tournaments, and so they're all ready to go. Cemetery is kinda the same way, they've been pretty busy, two of them, they're just, you know, pretty much staying busy, so, and then like I said, getting ready to start for Memorial Day, they've been doing all their maintenance, getting it ready, we have been, I found out, I guess cemetery and park both, don't happen very often, cemetery, but I guess there's been a hangout spot, like in Fairview, and been dealing with kids, or when I say kids, I mean, driving, the cars and broken glass, and like they're busting beer bottles and hanging out, and then the North Fairview, and then the parking lot by the splash pad, I've been told, there's two spots that there have been partying or whatever, so, other than that, staying busy, it's gonna be that time of year, mowing's gonna be fire up, and it's just, we'll be busy, I'm having surgery Thursday, so just got back for a day or two, and I'm gonna be off again, so getting everybody lined up, that, like I said, luckily got a good crew, and they know what to do and everything, so, other than that, staying busy.
All right, thank you. Police, animal shelter.
So February, you know, we had that cold blast, there was a few big calls that happened, we had car burglaries the other night, there was three juveniles involved, had turned in from a runaway to breaking into cars, to stealing gun, all shifts got part of it, and day shift actually is the one who found them at a house, I rest all three, Cherokee Nation picked them up, they've also been stopping some semis, they got a semi guy the other day that had homicide warrant for vehicular manslaughter out of Texas, had two counts of it, there was another car burglar doing the cold spell when it was minus something degrees, he was out breaking into a car, trying to steal a car over on Taylor Street, and they got foot pursuit of him, caught him, so crime hasn't stopped, and they got in the pursuit, I'm not gonna talk about the pursuit from Ohio the other day, it was extremely fast, went over to Katusa, and then broke off, Highway Patrol, you know, used spike strips on it and spiked it, and then they got him over there Highway sixty-six in Katusa, it's a guy out of Ohio, so, they must have said he, even with cold weather, other than that, I don't, you guys have anything?
Yes, I do. With the heavy rains today, any problems with your building leaking?
Nope, not one leak, which is odd.
Not one leak, so it's fixed?
Well, for now, till it rains the next, it's odd.
We did have a lot of snow.
The, O Mag didn't send somebody out to look at the roof and then inspection on it, so hopefully hear back from them, but I was talking to Trammell about that today, it's just odd, sometimes it leaks, sometimes it doesn't, but today, I didn't see any, 'cause it rained a lot this morning, so.
That did.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Animal shelter, we had twenty-one adoptions, nine cats, twelve dogs, and twelve returned to owner, they're still, you know, at capacity, and obviously, you get, you know, some out, and then they come back in, but they've been staying busy, cold snap, did, the heater went out, Becky manned it herself, I didn't realize the heater was out, but she stayed out there to make sure that it was on and took care of the animals, and so kudos to her for staying out there for a couple days, till we got the heat back on and running, and make sure it was comfortable out there, so, anything on that? Thank you.
Thank you. Rec Center, Mr. Moore.
Good evening, before I get too far into it, I just, I've got a couple of thank yous, I wanted to thank Frank and Gary and Buddy for helping us out last week with, you know, rock salt, that kinda stuff, and getting our sidewalks cleared, and our parking lot cleared in a very timely fashion, so, I know, I appreciated it, and all of our patrons did too, so they did a nice job taking care of us last week, so I wanna thank them for that. I handed out some light reading for you tonight, Kim Hines put together a newsletter for us, so she's gonna try to keep doing that on a monthly basis, so that gives you kind of an update of what's going on right now, I've got a few numbers for you, we had a hundred and six new members last month, still got five hundred and twenty-seven in the Cherokee Nation program, we had six hundred and ninety-six walkers, and we sold a thousand and fifty-three day passes, and then we still have, we have seventeen hundred and three members to date. We hosted fifteen public pool parties and five private, as the, in the letter indicates there, we had a step challenge last month, the winner of that was Brian Mayfield with six hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-four steps, and we had all the participants together total eleven million nine hundred and twenty thousand steps, so we had, there was thirty-two participants, so they, they did a pretty good job. We added one membership program, a senior membership program that's insurance sponsored called Silver and Fit, so we started taking a few memberships on that, so that's new in our arsenal. We are gonna install some barricades in our lobby to control our traffic flow, and, you know, we have a few that like to slip in and not pay and that kinda thing, so that's part of this, is to help be designed, we'll create a chute right up the middle, and then you can swipe your card or check in and then go your, go your way, and then we have an exit for each side of the, of the lobby there, so hopefully that'll, that'll curtail some of, some of that and increase our revenue, so we'll see how that goes, we'd, we'd done that at Y that I was at up in Kansas, is a very similar lobby situation, and we had those that liked to skirt the desk, you know, we had the chief on site a couple weeks ago, they're taking our, our membership program and, and gonna use, using that as a pilot program, and I think y'all maybe saw some of the, the media that went out on that, so that was well, well received. The Prior Creek Running Club was started, Chief Cantrell was the emptus of that, so he and then Katie Kearns, our assistant director, are leading that a couple of days a week, so if you wanna get into the running club, just let the chief know, and he'll sign you up, so, that's pretty much it, I guess we did make the last payment on our HVAC unit, so our cash flow's been pretty good, but it won't be next, or this last month, 'cause that's when the hundred thousand went through there to pay for that, but, I know we've got that one behind us, and we'll look to the next one, so, any questions?
Thank you. All right. Street?
Well, only here in Oklahoma, you can go from asphalt to concrete to snow plowing to, back to tree trimming, back down to snow plowing, back down to a flood, so I mean, we've been doing a little bit of everything through here, we've been doing everything we can, I mean, in between the weather and everything, so, other than that, we gone, went back to, going back tomorrow trimming trees, and, so, I mean, that's about it, been maintenance on our equipment, we still haven't found anything for our sweeper yet, or is that, that brake part, so, it's not looking good, but they're, they're not, they said they won't give up, they'll try to find something for it, so, I don't know if y'all's had any updates on our big project north of town out through there, it's, I'm gonna have them start calling you all.
Stop sign project?
Yeah.
Can we talk about that? I think the intent of the council was to put those stop signs at the curve, to stop people right at the curve, and where they're at now, people are actually accelerating back up to the speed before they enter that curve, which is totally defeating the purpose of them, so can we move those closer to the actual curve itself, literally right before you enter the curve, and it looks like y'all put them up on existing.
Yeah, there's existing poles saving some money there, but I can tell you, I can tell you right now that somebody was telling me that that's, that's against the law by putting stop signs there where there's no intersections.
Is Jeremy here?
No, I, I mean, I did some basic research on it, based upon what was on Facebook, of all things, which was talking about municipal sign guidelines for federal stuff, well, A, they're guidelines, and B is for federal roadways, and this is obviously a city street that doesn't connect to a federal road, state statute's pretty clear that municipals can act signage wherever they want, that being said, I don't think it's a great place for it either, it's right in the middle of the road, I mean, right in the middle of the street, I'm not sure there's a purpose that we needed it to serve.
Who sat down and had a meeting to discuss the actual location? Who?
Well, we've never, we've never had a discussion where to put them, they just said, they just said, figure out where to, where we think they would need to go be the best and put them, and there was two existing signs there with curdery signs on it, with speed limit signs, and, but again, there's no further, they are away from the curve, if they're taking that as a challenge where they stop there, then they wanna speed go around the corner, stop signs ain't gonna do no good anyway, you might as well take them down.
So on that note, somebody had mentioned that the M U T C D.
G.
Guidelines, right? No, it's, anyways, whatever, I went to their, their guideline on section two B oh five, stop sign applications, and it does say that stop signs should be used if judgment indicates that one or more of the following conditions exist, and if you go to item D, high speed and restricted views, so, you know, we can, we can use that argument, that the high speeds and the restricted views of the ninety degree, but again, it's city, it's not state or county, so.
So you think it's legal to put them at the curve?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I guess my biggest concern is the people posting on Facebook that we don't like the signs and we don't think they're legal. Kind of, and I guess my biggest concern is the people posting on Facebook that we don't like the signs and we don't think they're legal, so we're just gonna blow through them. Could you put somebody out there to show that blowing through a stop sign is gonna have financial consequences?
And our officers do patrol, I mean.
I get that, but yeah, I mean, we need to teach people the lesson that we put a stop sign up, by God, you're gonna obey it.
And just cause people say it on Facebook, don't, I mean.
I get that. But I, I, I've had some people call me saying that they're just blowing right through them.
Well, I was thinking, I, I haven't had one good comment out of probably thirty, forty calls that.
That's because we're slowing people down to go into that.
Well, I, I understand that, but that's the thing, but I think if we put it right there at the curve, I don't know, I, I.
Buddy called me that day to go out there and I told him to make the judgment, because I was busy on, we had something at the high school we were doing last, we're in the middle of it, so we did try to get out there, but then the storm hit and it's been, put us behind, behind, behind.
I think, let's get, let's get back to Buddy's report, we can discuss it, get back on.
But, I mean, other than that, I mean, we're just, like I said, we're gonna go back to trimming tomorrow, uh, we've got some, uh, we gotta bring our, uh, pipe, uh, cleaner out tomorrow, we've got four or five pipes that's, that stopped up, we're gonna get that out and rod them out and get them cleaned, so. Uh, we tried to just rod them out with pipes today, but the, on Fifth Street, the water was so full down through there that, uh, it's just almost too dangerous to climb, climb down there with, with the hip waders on, trying to unplug them, so. We decided we just wait, water's, water's already going down, so tomorrow we'll get in through there and, uh, get them opened up, hopefully if there's, uh, thought some animal or something stuck down in through there, but.
What areas of town are you gonna be doing that in?
Just all over, I mean, we've got, we've got some north, south, east and west, it's got probably leaves that's plugged up in them and, uh, we just got, I think, we got six addresses that we've got to, we're gonna try to go to tomorrow, so. I know Brian Street, Fifth, Fifth and Van, um.
Elliot, at LACC was blocked up.
Yeah, that, well, that one there, that whole, that whole intersection got to be replaced, the pipe and everything, when we do our drainage. I didn't want to tear all that out, try to replace the pipe and then turn it right around and then have our drainage project go, it, it will drain, like right now, it's already drained down, it's just, there's something inside there.
Yeah, it was holding it pretty good right there at the LACC terminal.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that was the, if there's a piece of, the pipe is rusted and it's pushed in or something, but we've tried to, even with that pipe under, it wouldn't, it wouldn't even, wouldn't open it up, so. But it's, it's drained down now, it just takes it a little while, but, uh, because all those intersections, we're gonna have to all put new drainage pipes and everything in, once, once that's, once that's done. Uh, I don't know, I think he still, he was trying to get the easements on through there and looking at the, I guess it's the water line or gas line or something goes through that. They may have to move it, move it over or something, I'm not real sure, but, uh, but other than that, that's, states, I guess they decide they painted intersections here, I don't know what's going on out there. South Elliot, I guess it's shut down, I don't know if it's the road between Walmart and him, but I guess county's out doing something out there and you had the roads blocked. I got chewed on that for that.
I did talk to Dale about the, uh, the First Street overlay, um, now that the weather's kind of got a little break in it. Uh, this was, uh, Sunday and he said that they were supposed to, he was gonna get with them start of the week, since the weather's gonna be good, they should be get back, so we should see that in the next week or so. Getting, getting started, so if you're heading out that northeast First Street, just be aware, they may, we have that restricted down.
And I think once they get started, if, if they just stick with it, it shouldn't take all that long to, long to do on that, so.
Well, yeah, I have a question, should have the answer to, but don't. In front of Bill Clinton, so it's still right here in the corner.
Yep.
With the road to our places, is that city or is that state? And I imagine it happened right after this snow and rain, but it's always terrible.
Oh, you talking about this, yeah, across from the, um. Yeah, no, that, that's state highway, yeah, right now, like I said, with the moisture in the ground when it, when it comes up, that, that'll, that weakens your, your patching material. Long as we're usually dry, that patching material lasts a long, long time, but, uh, with the rain that we had and people driving over it and moisture coming up through, uh, that's another thing, tomorrow we're gonna be, I've got two guys that are gonna go out doing the, the pothole. But that's something else we're gonna have to look at one of these days is have to get with the state or something, because, uh, the road going down on Graham Avenue is just falling apart. Last time we got with them, we, we paid for the material and they done, they done the labor part. So that may be something we need to look, maybe add into this next year or whatever to the, to whatever else that we've got going on, so. But they're gonna have, they're gonna have to do, they're gonna have to do some base repair, because it, I don't know if y'all have noticed all the WPA concrete is starting to shine through on the asphalt, so. We can't grind it really anymore, because like I said, we're, we're down into the, to the concrete, so.
Well, there's no doubt winter is a rough time for our roads, so.
Yeah, it's.
Appreciate what you guys are doing for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, I would like to say city clerk, but let's get her sworn in, how about that? Then she can give a report. Hannah Field. Come on up here, it's front and center. I have a black one. I'm gonna get in trouble.
You got a blue one?
She's got a blue one. That's his mayor's bag. Alright, if you'll raise your hand, ready, repeat after me. I, Hannah Morris.
I, Hannah Morris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oklahoma.
And of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Charter of the City of Prior Creek.
And the Charter of the City of Prior Creek.
And diligently to perform the duties of my office.
And diligently to perform the duties of my office.
And not to advocate.
And not to advocate.
Or give aid.
Or give aid.
Or support.
Or support.
To any person.
To any person.
Group.
Group.
Or party.
Or party.
Advocating the overthrow.
Advocating the overthrow.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
That's a good one.
That's catchy.
State.
State.
Or municipal government.
Or municipal government.
By force.
By force.
Violence.
Violence.
Or other.
Or other.
Unlawful means, so help me God.
Unlawful means, so help me God.
Alright. Yeah, right there.
Let's do this.
Let's do it. No coos.
Find your lap away.
Stay there. Oh goodness, you guys.
Here, keep him far left.
Alright, clerk, do you have a report?
Yes, sir.
You know what you just did?
From my chair, please.
Yes, from your chair.
We have a lot happening in the clerk's office and I am very proud of the gals. Uh, we lost one, but we gained a full-time one, thank you very much. Um, Ashley is now our full-time work clerk and she is rocking and rolling. Uh, all the girls are picking up all the slack and I am locked away in my office trying to get everybody paid. So thank you very much for your support and for leaving me alone a little bit. We are also trying to get the municipal payroll clerk, um, job applications in, they are coming in like wildfire. We also have, uh, gone out for the, uh, request for the, uh, third-party payroll service. I think we've submitted about six people, right?
I think about five so far.
And they're already responding, so I think we're gonna be okay if we keep moving forward. And I appreciate you guys letting us do this, we need it really badly. And Grace is, thank you for giving me grace while I get all this done, I appreciate it.
Alright, thank you. Alright, consent agenda, items to be removed, I'd like to remove F and M.
A and C.
H and J.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve B, D, E, G, I, K and L.
Motion. Second.
I have a motion from, uh, Beshears, a second from Brown. Call for the vote when you're ready.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Beshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item A, approved minutes of the February twenty-five, twenty twenty-five special council meeting.
So on item two B, I'm sorry, I need a motion, right?
Yeah, you need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Uh, I got a motion from Brown and a second from Beshears.
On item two B, it was approved the minutes of the February twenty-nineteen, February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five virtual emergency council meeting. We passed it on the consent agenda, but Councilor Gantier wasn't here for that one, and so probably should have abstained from that and, I don't know how we correct that. Okay. So for the next meeting, maybe put that back.
Yeah, we'll put it back on it.
Okay. That was all.
Alright. Any further, if none, call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Beshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Alford? Excuse me, Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Uh, item five C, approved claims for purchase orders through March fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
Motion for Beshears, second from Shropshire.
So I ask for this to come off, just, you have challenged us to find different ways to create revenue for the city. And one of the things that, ways that we create revenue is renting out our buildings. So Graham gets rented, uh, sometimes some other buildings get rented. I'm curious if we can, instead of, we, we, sometimes we rent these buildings and we give a refund. This, there's a particular one in the stack that brought this to my attention, but we give a refund to some of these civic organizations or other organizations that are bringing people into town. Why can we not have them seek that refund through the hotel motel board? And let the hotel motel funds reimburse that to where the city is keeping the fifty dollars and the fifty dollars coming from a tax basis virtually untapped? Besides what it's designated for.
Correct, so as it states right now, that's not in that ordinance.
Okay.
Um, the hotel motel board, um, I believe is kind of steering to revisit and look at that ordinance, bring it up to date. I would say that would be something that if the council would desire, we'd petition them to change and put into that ordinance.
I would like to see that happen, I can't speak for the rest of the council.
Sure.
Where you make your money is.
Yeah, so, what, what we're talking about is when they rent it, they get their deposit back and that's a fifty dollar deposit, so it would be that fifty dollars, uh, coming out of the hotel motel rather than the city's coffers, correct?
Correct, I mean, and I don't think any of us have a problem with letting somebody rent the building for free or to get their deposit back, but. The way that we tack, the, the way that we can, the city can tap into hotel motel fees is relatively limited. This is not necessarily tapping into that for the city, but it is allowing the money to stay within the city and still allowing that party to get their money back and be made whole on it.
Well, I have no problem, Chase, if we can kind of look and make sure the legality on that, we can get back, are you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
This is basically a refund though, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so the money that they put down, does it go into our coffers and then the, the hotel motel gonna pay it back?
No, uh, what, what I, the way I would see it as is basically probably a fifty dollar grant from the hotel motel to cover their rental fees. Does that make sense?
Okay, that, that's cool.
I, I don't know how I'll subscribe, I may not be describing it right, but.
The hotel motel would have to reimburse us for the deposits.
Or they reimburse the party, we never reimburse the party, the hotel motel reimburses the party of it possibly, to me.
Yeah, okay.
We can definitely look into the, look into that. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Beshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Uh, item F, approved mayor to sign a contract with Rainbow Fireworks for the Freedom Fest twenty twenty-five firework display. EDTA has approved funding and recommended approval of a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
Got a motion from Smith and a second from Choya. Uh, I pulled this one just for clarification sake, um, I actually have the correction that I'm gonna address here, but, uh, there's an individual with Rainbow that I've known for, for some time as we've done this and he swears up and down that my name is Kyle Dole. Um, and so we cut that corrected and when they sent in the final contract, they sent in the one that had Kyle Dole, I've got the one that is same wording, but it has my correct name on it, so. If anybody's wondering who Kyle was, uh, that's supposed to be me, but we do have the correct contract in our possession, so.
So you've got some aliases that you're trying to throw off on other folks.
You go ahead and try to find Kyle Dole and tell me what he's doing and we'll, we'll put a star on that real quick, but, uh, that's all, that was the only reason I pulled that off. We're just approving the, this, the signing of that agreement. Any further questions? Call for the vote.
Beshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Item H, approve an expenditure in the amount of twenty-seven thousand six nineteen eighty-five to Metro Emergency Upfitters LLC for emergency lighting equipment and labor for installation. Twenty thousand be paid from police drug forfeiture account, nine six nine six five 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 five. And seven thousand six nineteen eighty-five to be paid from police donations account, uh, nine six nine six five 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 oh two. This is an Oklahoma state contract price under SW one forty-two.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion from Choya and a second from Brown.
So on the five 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 account, there's twenty-one eight hundred. And then the five five oh two, there's thirty-one thousand seven hundred in that area.
I have a question, you and I have talked already today, I have a couple of questions. Uh, this truck is gonna be your truck, right?
It's gonna be an abandoned vehicle, yes.
What is your truck going, where's it going?
The plan is to bring it to City Hall as a pull vehicle and take the black one back and, uh, surplus it.
So it's gonna go to the mayor's, what he said?
Just what he said, well.
Yeah.
It'll have to come before you guys, I mean, if you don't want to do that, you don't have to, but it'll be just like we did the black one, it will come up here for surplus to, or bring to City Hall.
I love that black one, it is, um.
She's old, and it's an oh seven.
She's got some rattles and.
You are gonna pull a siren out before you give it to him.
He says he wants to be a reserve, so.
What else am I gonna do when I go by your house?
I don't know.
You're all tutu, correct?
Be illegal, you guys.
No, no.
The second question I got, I, we were, it's kind of floored me on what it cost to rig this truck. But you said that that's the same cost, did it cost to do the other trucks, did it?
So we, we've not done a truck, but the Tahoe's were eighty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-six eighty-one, um, this one, the full price is seventy-four six one nine, um.
I'm talking about that rigging of it.
Yeah, I mean, they're, it's gonna be similar, it's not apples to apples, because Tahoe's versus a truck, you got the bed on the back, the covers and the boxes that slide out.
Yeah, I guess I'm asking, is it, is the same emergency equipment?
Correct, yes.
What I'd like to see, uh, I understand what you're saying, but what I'd like to see is us go out for bids on this and see if we can get a better price.
I mean, it's all state contract pricing, so, I mean.
There may be several bidders that aren't state contract priced, too, that could save some money, I would like to see us try a bid and see what comes up, get a better deal.
How many places are there in the state that would be able to outfit a vehicle like this?
Well, visual force you can't get into, before we were having to order the stuff, bring it to the PD and then take it up, um, to Lanley to get done, and we were doing legwork to take that up there, um, to do it. This one is a preferred dealer for, um, sound off and federal, um, so the prices, I did talk to the, the sales rep today about it. Um, he said they get a discount as far as through federal signal and sound off because they're preferred dealer in the business they do with them, so they're.
God, Laney did most of ours.
We bought all the equipment through, uh, third party, so not through him. He did the upfitting. All the, uh, equipment, most of, some of them bought visual fours, some of them bought through other vendors. This is a one stop shop, I mean, everything's there, so if there's anything like that, then you have to go run up there.
That's my only hangover, if we can get three bids on it and see what we can give, if we can do better, fine, not we lost anything.
Can you, I, I, I've just got a question, can you do better than state contract price? Is that something that's the low bid for throughout the state or?
It's an agreed upon price from the state, it's my understanding, that generally it's gonna be a, a low bid, yeah, I mean, so, from my understanding how it works, it's typically several vendors will submit it each year. So, from my understanding how it works, it's typically several vendors will submit it each year, however long that contract is, and.
They have to own it.
Yeah.
There can be one more, one more than one vendor though that has state contracts, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, on, on parts.
Yeah.
There can be. And, I mean, I, I, I will say, going out for bids is probably, I mean, Chase has said it multiple times, you're probably not gonna get hurt when you go out for bids. But there's lots that needs to go into what's the best value for the city when you're talking about a bid. From my experience, it, your equipment is probably gonna be anywhere from six to twelve weeks out, depending on which equipment you go with. And then trying to get into a particular vendor. There's one in Catoosa, the last I knew, they were four to six months out before they even took your car. After they had your car, it's probably gonna be around two to three weeks before you get it back. You know, I know that we've used an individual in Langley, I don't know what his backlog is, but, I mean, part of it, the value for the city needs to be if it's sitting there, or, I mean, even if Jeremy's driving around but doesn't have full use of it, it's not, we're not getting good use out of it. So, the ability to be able to get it in and be done with it has to have some level of value to it, it's just a matter of what, if we put a dollar number on that, I guess.
And that would probably be in the city anyway, if we get bids what their time, their turnover is.
I would think so, I mean, most of them are generally gonna tell you when they could get it in.
I just, in the past, we've done state contract pricing on all of our equipment, we've never taken police vehicles out for bid on equipment, ever. A lot of the stuff you haven't seen because we'll do the bank stuff and then it goes behind the scenes, but even the stuff we have done through the Police Department, state contract is the way we typically go. And it's like, so this is one-stop shop, you're not paying somebody time to drive vehicles around and move them back and forth, and they get it, they get all the equipment, something missing, they fix it, and they bring it back to us.
Didn't you say that this, uh, one of the few uses of the drug forfeiture account is this right here?
Correct, equipment.
Can't use it for just everything, it has to.
Correct.
It's not kind of a general fund, so, and we're not violating any statutes if we go to.
You know, and the other issue is, you're not gonna just go to any, was this a Ford, right? You're not just gonna go to any Ford dealer to have something like this done, I mean, I could do it for you for free, but I, I wouldn't do it.
Well, there's lots of components that go into it as well.
That's, that's what I mean, although, it's, it's not as simple as putting on a cold air intake and then just plugging something to tune it, you're, and if you mess these cars up, you've, you've just messed up the entire car, so. It's.
Do they give you a turnaround on that?
Uh, a week once it's in, and then looking at April, maybe sooner.
Well, number one, I, I don't have a problem with it. Number two, I don't know why we wouldn't go out and bid to see if we could save dollars. Number three, the mayor's not prepared to be sure anybody's right there.
I think it's you.
I don't think it has anything to do with me.
I mean, my, my thought would be to go with the bid, but that's my, his thoughts.
Just because we've always done something in the past, doesn't mean that can't change if it's, could get the city a better deal, too.
Yeah, and that's the point I was making, you wouldn't.
Well, it's not that, it's all, I mean, it's based off state contract pricing as well.
Can you get a better deal than state contract price?
I don't think you're going to, because there's a lot of components that go into this that another shop can't do, I mean, they're gonna have to sub some of it out and stuff, I mean, you're looking at a lot of different components that are going into.
We bid it, but we'll never know.
On to Tyler's point, it's a timing issue, too, I don't wanna say for months, but the truck we have, I'm not using it.
And again, the timing issue's not a problem, he's got one to drive, it's a new one. The only thing is, is he gonna give it to the mayor to drive, so there's not a hurry.
I think he's driving a new one.
No.
He's driving a.
Fourteen?
Yeah. But, just for, yeah, that, just for a little correction on that one.
I think even though, I think even Mr. Trammell's point to the fact this isn't coming out of our general fund, so this is something that if this is what our department head thinks may be best in this situation, this might be the way to move it.
Please, I would let the department head manage his department.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Call for the vote?
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Lamar?
No.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
All right, item J, approved Prior Creek Rec Center to seek bids for lawn care for the upcoming season.
Motion.
A motion from Choya and a second from Brishers. Discussion?
At the risk of being fried. Are we gonna go out for bids, single bids to be open here or whatever, how are we gonna do this?
I don't think this one's gonna meet the crit, criteria, criteria to require sealed. Mike, we can.
I'm just thinking, good practice, I know legally we don't have to, I'm just trying to.
Well, well, and what we're trying to do going forward, and I've talked to some with, with Councilman Brown and others about it, is follow the guidelines of the purchasing manual that we're trying to put together. And so, with that, Mike, do you remember what, what you paid out last year?
Uh, I think, I think the bid was like fourteen or something like that, fourteen eight, but, but to Bruce's point, because I think we talked about this last year, you know? So, and I'm meeting with Hannah tomorrow, actually, to talk about that, but, well, one of the objects on there, one of the items is over twenty-five thousand, but the others are not. And so, um, the idea was, is just create a, a bid, or a, you know, I've got a sheet that I have that I used last year, that has all the specs that are required on it. Thought we'd put it in the paper, because I'd like to, you know, get it moving, right? So, and I think in the, in the book it said, in the proposed guidelines, ten days minimum, right? So, um, get it out as soon as we can to meet that guideline. Have them submitted to City Hall by five o'clock, whatever day that happens to be, and we'll decide. And, um, you know, we'll put it in the paper, I think we'll put it on our website, I think.
We do, we put it on the website.
Yeah, and then, and then we're covered. And, uh, everybody's got the same opportunity, and I guess they can either reach out to Hannah or myself for that form, probably, probably your office, I'm thinking. But anyway, we'll, uh, so it's, you know, out there, and everybody's got a shot.
And there's lots of lawn mowing companies out there right now, so I'm sure there'll be a lot that wanna jump on it.
Yeah, so.
Now, do we need to differentiate this year between the side lot and the front lot again?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
All right. So. So you're gonna bid that out?
Yep, yeah, those, those three items are on there tonight, so, so, yeah.
All right. Further discussion? Call for the vote?
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Item M, approve an expenditure in the amount of forty-five thousand five ten oh three to Eric and Sons Asphalt LLC for PRY twenty-four oh six, Prior Creek Golf Course Path Improvement. Pay app number two to be paid from Golf Capital Outlay Account four one four one five five four one one. I brought this up because, uh.
Motion.
I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
Second.
Motion from Brown, second from Brishers. I brought this up because the amount is actually different on the invoice, I'm not sure if it's, if it's there, but we'll call it that. It's actually forty-five thousand five oh nine thirteen.
Saving money.
Yes. So with that, if we could, uh, make that motion for forty-five five oh nine eighty-three?
So moved. Eighty-three or thirteen?
Thirteen, thank you. Forty-five five oh nine thirteen? Thirteen.
Okay. Damn, yeah.
All right. Call for the vote?
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
All right, Mayor's report, uh, actually, yeah, let's, Mayor's report, item A. Discussion and possible action regarding an increase in the water rates inside the corporate city limits of Prior Creek. Five dollars and twenty-two cents per one thousand gallons to five dollars and twenty-seven per one thousand, effective as of the March twenty twenty-five billing.
Motion?
Second.
I have a motion from, uh, Choya and a second from Brown. Mr. Chris?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members. As I mentioned, every six months, um, since going on since twenty-three of calendar year, the OWA had to study on their water system, and they've been hitting us with a two and a half percent increase since January twenty-three. And they gotta pan it out to twenty-seven right now, but I think they, they're updating their, um, study, and it could be a little bit more, it could be a little less, it depends on what they find. But as of right now, we're looking at a five cent increase, which is a straight pass-through, um, from OWA, and you might think, well, what does five cents lead to on MUB's side? So just so you know, last fiscal year, I'm going from July one twenty-three to June thirtieth twenty-four, we purchased four hundred and seventy-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-one units. One unit is one thousand gallons, so that equates to four hundred and seventy-nine million gallons of water that we purchased. So if we don't pass these stuff straight through, what we're finding is, or what we'll find is, five cents this fiscal, or this half, five cents next half, that's ten cents, so make easy math, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, that's forty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars if you don't pass those ten cents through. So what does that equate to, just for, say, on MUB's side? I was looking at my claims last night, we approved a claim for Blue Cross Blue Shielder Insurance, forty-nine thousand dollars. That equates to a lot, uh, my department expense is about one point one six eight million is what I have expended, or what I have budgeted. I purchased last year hundred, or one million six thousand dollars is what we cost for our, just the water alone, before we pass it on, so. Um, I thought I would kind of give you some numbers, because the numbers are in the details, I live in the numbers, and I, um, that's where it says it all. So their two and a half percent increase to us equates to a one percent increase to our customer, that five cents. So your average user will use five units of water, which is five thousand gallons, that's a quarter that they'll see on their bill, um, come April first, if approved. And with that, I'll entertain any questions, I provided you the spreadsheet that I always create every year, I didn't really update, I only updated our numbers this time because we're still so low compared to everybody else. And there's a reason why we're so low to everybody else, and I think I say this every time I come up here, is because we fortunately have four utilities, whereas rural water districts, they have one utility, others only have two, I mean, so we're able to spread the wealth around, I guess, if you wanna say it, but, unfortunately for us, we have the electric system, and that's the cash cow for everything. And back in the day, the electric system subsidized every utility, that's not a good run of business. If you read the charter, in a nutshell, the way I anticipated, it states, basically states that I gotta provide a reliable utility to the customer with a little bit of profit, so I could provide some money for the city. So, I provide you guys right now with about seven hundred and seventy-five thousand two hundred dollars. I just wanted to say that out loud, because that kind of seems to kind of get dropped to the wayside, because everybody thinks it sells tax, it's really not sells taxes, utility sells as well. So I put that plug in there, Taylor, period. But yeah, I will entertain any questions, I mean, you can see that we're, we're low, we're, stay low, but like I said, it's, we're low because we have multiple utilities to come off of, and right now we've got the water at a pretty good point to where it's whole. And I don't wanna drop, take any steps backwards when I took all these steps forward, so, it's kind of a.
Is there anybody in our area that has cheaper water rates than we do?
Well, no.
Good to be.
Um, I've got.
Grove at five, per five thousand gallons is the same price as us.
Right, and Grove has a gas, and Grove's up there at the lake.
The rest were, closest one looked like.
And that was, I didn't even, real, I mean, I did this six months ago, middle of the year last year, when I came up here the last time. I mean, and Grove had done there since twenty fifteen, so I couldn't find anything, so it's kind of hard to find some, and when I got the other fifteen or twenty here that you see, um, I've got some that were highlighted, that were public power communities that have at least three utilities, which is most public power community has water, sewer, and electric. We're fortunate, we're one of the few cities that have all four, if you wanna call it fortunate, I call it a headache, but I love it, so, it's what I do. But yeah, I mean, we're still low. The thing you get with us, if you look at the base charge, um, our base charge includes the first two thousand dollars and really doesn't charge for the meter. Where a lot of people, right off the bat, it don't matter what you use, you're gonna get hit with a twenty-five dollar charge, or a thirty dollar charge, or a forty-one dollar charge, which is I wouldn't have to come up here that often if I had that kind of meter charge, um, but we don't, so this is where we're at. If we don't pass it now, then whenever I do get it, then it's kind of be one of those, um, it'd be more than five cents, and the people are gonna see it more than they will now.
Here's the problem I got.
Okay.
I mean, it's not this one thing, people are struggling to pay their utility bills in prior right now, they're so high. For whatever reason, and, I mean, you haven't been up here for a minute, for, for a while, but this is not the first time in the two years I've been on this council that you've been here, we're constantly passing these on, passing these on, and then people are opening up the paper and saying that MUB is, is promoting, they're, you know, they're, they're giving bonuses. I think the perception out there is that MUB needs to start absorbing some of these costs rather than passing them on to people, and do a better job, do the same job that we've asked all the other departments in the city to do, to get their, to slam the brakes on their, on their costs.
Well, I mean, we can go, I guess we can go at this the two ways if you want. I mean, we have a handshake agreement for the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand two hundred. Or, we can go back to the way it says in the charter, which is a percentage, and that's based on, um, what we bring in, and you don't know what that is till the end of the year, so you really don't know what the budget? That's kind of why we went with this whole, it was five hundred, then we kicked it up to five fifty, because it was five hundred forever, and then.
So you're basically holding your sausage.
Not really. I'm just saying, that I gotta make a profit to give to you guys some money, and if I don't pay my staff what I feel like they're deserved, then I'll lose that staff.
Same thing with City Prior. I mean.
I mean, I tell the people, and it's just, I just tell you straight out, I mean, we've got some of the cheapest utility rates in the state.
I give them, I, I, I agree.
So, I don't know how much more you wanna pull it out, I mean, extend it, because I'm just doing a pass-through, I mean, I'm not asking for a cost increase.
Seems like MUB continues to be this, this department in the city that has to be hands-off to the council, we can't question, we can't, you know, there, there's nothing we can do to try to help our, or help the constituents here, so it's very frustrating. And I get it's only twenty-five cents, but those twenty-five cents start adding up to people living paycheck to paycheck.
And it adds up to our budget, too, I mean.
I get that.
But like I said, my door's always open, so you always can come and look at my bus, you can look at everything, I mean, I have nothing to hide.
If you look at some of the other towns that, me being from GRDA, and we, we serve a lot of customers, Prior's got some of the best utilities around, and the best employees that, that we ever worked with actually came from the city of Prior, believe it or not. And, uh, the, the rates that we pay here are really, really, uh, low compared to most of the customers that we serve. If you go to somebody even like Claremore, well, they're using their, their utilities to pay for their city, so their cost of electricity is a lot higher than what Prior has to, has to pay.
In the utility business, and I'm not, you know, the percentage, I wouldn't go the percentage, because the reason why we swat, switched was because we could, you guys had a set amount of budget from us, a set amount of money, so, um, you know, if it's a mild winter and a mild summer, that percentage isn't gonna be that much. But if it's super hot winter, or super hot winter, super hot summer and it's super cold winter, that percentage might go up, I mean, it could very well go up, I mean, so back in the day, that's kind of how they wanted the flat rate. So.
Do, do you have any idea how many more O raises OWA has planned?
Oh, yeah.
Do they have a?
They have a, at least two and a half percent for the next, till twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven.
So every six months or a year?
It'd be every six months, they have, they have the right, their, their authority has the right to do it, they're looking at their rates every two years, or, I mean, twice a year, so they look at it in Ju, January, and they look at it in July. And they're gonna hit us every, every six months, they told us that.
The only way that, if you wanted to as a, as a group or whatever, the, the, is, is to go before the state, that's the only way you could do that.
And that would be a tough.
That'd be tough.
Because if you look at Oklahoma Corporation Commission, they get hit every, right now, and I can't speak for PSO or OG&E or the co-ops, but if you look at their agendas, they keep getting hit with quite a few, um, cost escalators. Why? I mean, it's different stuff, so.
I, I'm just asking for future knowledge of what was.
Yeah, I mean, so, just so you know, you know, we're gonna, they're gonna hit us till twenty twenty-seven at least, and then they're gonna relook at it, you know, because you should, most utilities relook at their, um, study about every three to five years, and that's where you probably need to, you know? I mean, look at it three to five years, so you're not setting yourself down, back, so, um, like I said, we're fortunate, because we got some of the cheapest utilities, and we're able to, to pay our staff and give raises, and we're able to do this and that, but at the end of the day, I mean, I would say we're, if you add up everything that everybody pays, we'd probably be in the bottom ten, probably fifteen cities. And that's a few clue, my four utilities with OG&E's gas, because, you know, would you feed some of these other towns? And that's a few clue, my four utilities with OG&E's gas, because, you know, would you feed some of these other towns, you got rural water districts that feeds also, all this, somewhere on propane, so you know, you can't just pick and choose, if you wanna come, compare apples and apples, you gotta pick all the utilities together, so.
So, this is just coming from a, a principal standpoint, not, not picking on anybody. So if you wanna hire somebody from MUB, does that have to come before us?
No.
And if you wanna give them a raise, does that have to be approved by the council?
Then it is approved by my board.
So.
So this is what, this is what the city has over MUB, okay? So you confirm my appointments on my board?
Mm-hmm.
And you approve or deny stuff like this?
Yeah. Now, I, and I understand the money, where the money's coming from is a little bit different for MUB employees versus, you know, the, the clerk's office or the PD, but being part of a government entity does make it a little bit different. How much and raises have been made in the same timeframe, let's just say, the last five years between MUB and the city? Like, are city employees also getting raises at the same time MUB employees, or are they getting more? And I understand it's a different, we're talking about money coming from different places, but, uh, Charles's point is there, there's kind of a bad, uh, picture being painted at, from certain perspectives, because some folks who are seeing their utility costs go up, which everything's going up, so we all know that, but then when you read such and such is getting raises, or bonuses, or this is happening, that's happening, this new thing, and I, and I understand there's nuance to that, but with these costs, is there anything that can be done to mitigate the cost to the consumer, specifically for those people who are, who may be struggling, who, who's pinching every single penny? And I, and I do understand that for people who are having a hard time paying their, their bill, y'all work with them as far as getting a payment plan, I mean, you gotta.
For the most extent, yes, if you, um, come out and ask for, you know, for help, and if you haven't been cut off, you know, numerous times, 'cause you're gonna have those people, they're gonna want help, but then, you know, they.
Yeah, and, and I understand you don't.
Spend their money elsewhere, but we try to find that, we try to give them the right avenue to say, okay, this church may have some money for you, this, show the comfort may have some money for you, I mean, we give them ways to look for stuff. I mean, I'm not going out there going, here, I can get you this kinda money, because honestly, we don't have time for that.
Right.
I mean, we're running a, a business.
Oh, I agree. But, but I, I'm just saying, because, because it's from the standpoint of being tied to a government entity like us.
The only way you could change, what Charles is talking about, you gotta change the charter, and that would be go to the vote with the people, and I've always been told that if you wanna do a charter change, you might be opening up a can of worms you don't wanna open.
No, I agree, but I, what, but what I, what I'm asking, though, is what ways are available to us to prevent, to, to mitigate the cost to the consumer that's gonna go up, because everything's going up.
That's. So, uh, so let me ask, let me ask you this, is it fair to me to have to not up my stuff whenever everybody else in the world is upping their stuff?
Well, no, I agree with that.
And you know what I mean?
I understand that. No, I understand.
You're asking me to eat something, and then I'm.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
The only way to do that is for him to change his budget, which you don't have any authority to.
Right.
To answer your question in plain.
Okay.
That's correct.
Your board takes care of that.
What's that?
Your board takes care of the running of your, uh.
Right, so we have a budget committee that we meet, um, we'll, we'll start meeting in April
Mm-hmm.
to go over next year's budget, and how we're gonna finish up this year, and then it gets approved, approved by the, it's recommended by our board, or by a committee, and then it's approved by the board.
What I imagine they do, and I, but correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I'm assuming a little bit, you guys have a handshake agreement for a dollar amount, that's the four hundred.
Seven hundred and seventy-five thousand two hundred.
So he probably sets his budget intending to have at least that much profit to give to you guys.
Yeah.
The other option, if you wanna enforce the charter, which you mentioned, is a twenty percent, he can hold back twenty percent net profits, anything above that, he gives to you.
So just so you know, my budget last year, I lost two hundred thousand dollars, I had to pull two hundred thousand dollars out of the reserves, because, um, well, we helped out the city, had a tornado, and I had to pay my payroll before I got paid from them, so I was light last year, I'll be heavy this year on that side, so.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to pick on anybody, it's just, i- if, I, it's just MUB being tied to the gu- the city government, you know, if this was just a, a strictly private entity, I, I wouldn't care, 'cause strictly private entities can do whatever they want. But because there's a tie to the city, there's a little bit more with that, but I understand that when your costs go up, naturally, everybody else's costs have to go up. The only part that I was concerned with, was what Charles mentioned, was the perception of costs going up for everybody, but then there's uh, articles about bonuses and new things and this, that, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying those are bad in themselves, I'm just saying that there's a perspective.
Correct that. We don't do bonuses, do we? Buy our equipment, yes we do, it's budgeted. So if you want, I mean, I don't wanna speak for Buddy, he probably already left, but, uh, he's in a hurt spot right now for a street sweeper.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't like to go to that point, to where I'm hurting, hunting and scratching for equipment, no, at that time.
I wish you'd do us a favor, uh, and, and, and this is, the amount of downtime you have versus the cor- the surrounding communities, uh, outages, you guys have very, very, very few outages compared to the other cities around, and that's something that people need to look at very, very closely. Uh, it's, it's, it's amazing how fast everything comes back on in, in the short period of time. And another thing, the Southwest Power Pool, uh, when was it, two years ago, that they decided to, uh, penalize the whole Southwest Power Pool, because Texas uh, had an issue, and so they were down millions, and how, how much did you guys have to come up with as a city for that thing? It was, it was a.
You're talking Winter Storm Year Area twenty-one, that was, that was Winter Storm Year, that was back in February twenty twenty-one, um, that was a, a bad time. Um, but yeah, the wellheads were freezing up, um, everybody's electric bill went up, everybody's gas bill went up, so we got fortunate on the gas side, on the electric side, ours was, um, we had to pay an extra one point four million dollars.
Yep.
Out of our pocket, which is what you'll see on your bill, which is a, um, it's the Winter Storm Year, it's PCAX, it's a flat point zero zero one five, because thank the Lord, the Bank of Commerce flowed, we had a one million dollar, we pulled one million out of our reserves, and then we're using that to help pay that off over a ten-year timeline.
Right, but it, it was something you had no.
We, we had no control over that one point four million, GRDA didn't have any control over, I mean, SPP says you have to generate. Well, it's kinda hard to generate when, okay, let's just be honest, renewable, everybody likes renewable, everybody likes carbon-free. Renewable's not reliable, okay, let's just throw that out there right now, renewables aren't reliable, so the only thing reliable during that time was gas and coal. They're trying to kick coal out right now, which is wrong, in my point of opinion. Gas wells, wellheads were freezing up, so you couldn't get the supply to get to the generating facilities to generate, so if you recall, we took two blackouts, or brownouts, whatever you wanna call them, um, thirty-minute timeline. People, if you recall back then, they was like griping, why didn't we know? Well, I'll be honest with you, I knew fifteen minutes before it started, because SPP called GRDA, GRDA called me and said, you're going down in thirteen, fifteen minutes, and I'm like, I'm better get a shower, apparently not.
Mm-hmm.
And we went down about six-thirty, got back on at seven, then we had to take another hit, uh, nine-thirty, I think it was, to ten. A lot of people didn't nail it, know it, because maybe we took out sub number, we took out one sub. I didn't take the hospital out. Oh, I took my sub out, thank the Lord, you know?
Yeah.
We took out, yeah, we took out sub number two.
Yeah.
So I took up High, High School, Ninth Street, that south of Ninth Street, yeah.
Indicate that.
My wife was complaining about that.
My food, Jared.
Yeah, so, you know.
Let me, let me throw this in, and maybe this can, can kinda help the conversation. Um, one of the things that we are looking at is, as a whole, I mean, the discussion does come up. How do we, how do we save the end user? How do we keep the bills low? How do we keep them there? Um, and I'm not, I'm not hinting to anything, I'm not saying, but things like, the fact that our, our utilities are all billed on one invoice to each, each home makes it convenient, so if, if our water goes up, what can we adjust to take down? The discussions have been had, um, in various areas, one of them, for example, just an example, is with Mr. Dinsmore, can we change our trash service to save cost on that, to keep those bills lower? Um, those are, those are discussions that are being had, um, and, and looked at. There was a three percent, wasn't it? A three percent?
Yeah, he has, in his contract, he has the right for a three percent cost escalator every.
We had.
February, I think.
That's an annual thing, um, and he called, and because we're, we're working with that, uh, he agreed to keep that out this year. That, that was from him, he said, Mr. Dinsmore called and said, don't, don't do that, since we're talking about things, let's leave that out. So there are, there are those efforts to do that, but, you know, unfortunately, as the cost goes up, for, I mean, it is what it is, I mean, I understand what you're saying, understand what you're saying, but.
Yeah, and it's not that I'm against raising, doing this, these raises, 'cause you, you gotta be responsible and plan for the future, so I, I wasn't picking at.
No, you're fine, I understand, I mean, it's, I, it's the nature of the beast, everything goes up, everybody's utilities is what they think, and, I mean, it is what it is, I mean, the funny part about it is, is behind the scenes, at my counterparts, other city managers, they're like, your rates are too low, you're making us look bad. And here I am, fighting for a five cent rate increase. I mean, so it's.
Well, no, that's not a rate increase, that's a pass through.
It's a pass through, yeah, I'm sorry, it's not a rate, it's a pass through.
This is not about the rate increase, the pass through, whatever, this is about the perception. This is why I, I want to have this conversation, sorry. I like MUB, I have nothing against MUB, I have nothing against the MUB board. I'm telling you, the people out there are looking at this saying, I am getting nickel and dimed on my bills, and MUB's sitting at City Hall party. Literally, I've gotten calls basically saying that. Obviously, you're a monopoly here, we're gonna have to use MUB. So I am just asking that if there is a way to, to, to slow down some of these pass-throughs, I would ask if you think about that and consider it, that's all I'm asking.
I will take that back to the board, and I will just tell you what I tell some of the customers that are non-stop, la di da, you know, non-stop, non-stop, and they finally get back to me, and they've already cussed my staff out, I tell them to go find another town, live in there for a little bit, and see what you got, and then come back, because you don't know what you got until you leave. And it's gonna be honest, I mean, you really don't, if you've been elsewhere, I mean, I think I've said this before, but I've lived in a trailer house in Salina back in, well, I moved here back in two thousand three, three. And I was paying sixteen-by-sixty trailer house. I was paying more than I pay for my house right now, at that time, and I would bet if I keep going, and I would check the rates, it would be more. I mean, people don't know what they got until they don't have it. And I'm not, I don't try to be, you know, mean about it or whatnot, but same way I tell my staff about the public and the private sector. You don't know what it's like out in the private sector, if you only worked in the public sector, and vice versa. Totally different. But I will take that to my board, Mr. Trammell, and then we will, um.
And again, I'm not attacking, I'm not attacking MUB.
And then I will, couple months, I got my chairman of the board here, he's listening too, so we'll, um, once we talk to them, we'll, I'll get back with you guys and let you know, but I mean, like I said, I mean, OWA has, they're gonna do it for the next, twice a year for the next, at least three more years. GRDA, like I said last time, they're gonna do it for the next two years, um, at least, and then they're gonna relook at it, because they wanted a five-year, and we's like, no, let's do three, 'cause electric utility is kinda, it's scary right now.
One-seventh of the votes, Seth's in the room on that one, though.
Yeah, well, that's, that's true, but, um, like I tell those people, I'm only, I'm only seven votes, but, um, we'll take that into consideration, Mr. Trammell, and then.
If you guys want a fun fact straight out of your charter, section forty-seven in your charter specifically said, September nineteen seventy-six billing, water is fifty cents per one thousand gallons. Need math on the increase over the time. Fun fact, that's in your charter.
That's essentially a percent a year, which is what we're passing now, just the quick math.
Right, further discussion on that? Sir, off the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yeah.
Thank you guys, and girls?
Thank you, Jared. Item B, discussion possible action to approve recommendation from the EDTA to accept an offer from Chris Fogelman, or, or an LLC name to be determined by Mr. Fogelman prior to closing the amount of forty-five thousand for the sale of the PYO building located seven hundred East Graham, and authorizing the mayor to sign all necessary paperwork for the transaction, and approve reasonable changes in closing costs from the estimated amount. City will have normal closing costs for a seller, which are estimated to be one thousand two hundred and forty-seven, and will reimburse the ETA for sales-related cost of thirty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents for advertisement, netting approximately forty-three thousand seven fourteen oh five to the city to be deposited in capital outlay, sale of surplus account, four-four triple zero forty-one eighty-one.
Motion.
Second.
A motion from Brown, and a second from Brashears? Discussion?
I will say that I appreciate Mr. Fogelman and Mr. Anderson for both being here tonight.
And Mr. Swordall.
And Mr. Swordall.
Absolutely.
So, so this is a proposal to sell the PYO building. We've had that building for quite a while. Uh, the council asked the EDTA to look at what to do with it, um, we took a look at it, we put it out for proposals back in January. Mr. Fogelman, uh, made a proposal, uh, the EDTA looked at it, thought that was in the best interest of the city. Um, his bid was forty-five thousand to buy the building, he has done the legwork to talk with the city commercial building inspector and the school on what to do about parking and reconstruction and things like that, he has his plan worked out. And, you know, we think you guys should, and ladies should have, should approve that, and as we've done with other properties that we've sold, we think it should go into that surplus account, which the city clerk um, did the legwork to make sure it went into the right account, so we put that account number down the first time this time, and that those funds should be, um, earmarked for repairs to the Graham community building, like you've done with the previous properties. But Mr. Fogelman's here for you to ask any questions as well, or we can go sit down and you can vote.
I have a comment, but it's not for either of you, so Terry, you, in your history article for the paper, said how much Mr. Graham paid for that building, when he bought it from?
You're putting me on the spot, I don't recall the exact amount.
But it just, it's very close to the amount that we're getting for the building today.
That is true.
Seventy years ago, and I know that this money's going to the, or, or at least there's discussion about using it for the Graham building. We would be remiss to say that this is one of the problems that historically Pryor's had, of not taking care of Pryor and Pryor's stuff, and this is the result of it. Um, we are getting basically no return on the investment of the property originally that was given to us for free, um, I just hope that we're gonna start doing better about taking care of our stuff, is really the whole point of my long talk there.
So this money is going into earmarked for the new building, right?
So the, the plan is that, you know, when we sold the gravel pit, that forty-two thousand, I think, was the final number on that. The council did vote that that money would go into the Graham building, that's still the plan, that's still there. I wanna make sure that everybody's aware that, uh, and I think I talked to Terry about doing this in unforeseeable, but I think it's appropriate here now. Um, as of yesterday morning, um, we discovered a nat- a, a natural gas leak in the Graham building. So, uh, Jared's guys from the gas department came, and they, they checked some things, uh, there's been some di- dialogue back and forth between uh, plumbers and maintenance on that, and things that we need to check to verify that that's really what we've got, but, um, you know, when they built buildings, they did it kinda good back then, and they put all those pipes right through concrete floors with no sleeves. And so if we find that that gas leak is in there, uh, that repair could be very, right? Um, tear up, uh, and I would have to also, but I also have to mention that that concrete floor is on the second story, is not on the ground floor. So that could become a very costly repair to fix that gas leak. That said, we have to find it, we gotta find where that, where the leak is actually originating from, but it.
Light a match.
May you go right in. So that said, um, I do think that, that as we, as we move forward, we, we do consider allowing, um, whatever is needed to go into the repair of that building, um, but I would also say that whatever's left in the meantime, um, should there be. um, should there be funds left afterwards that we work with Ms. Blue, and she's still there? No, she's probably not doing her stuff, but we had talked about taking whatever was left and, um, finding a way to allow her to invest that money so that it could make some money for us while it's sitting there. So, um, just wanna be very clear, this doesn't mean we have ninety-five thousand or ninety thousand to spend on the Graham building. This means whatever we don't spend, um, whatever we spend after the gravel pit, whatever is that extra out of that, we may have to tap into this to cover that. And I wanna make sure that everybody's on board with that game plan.
Well, I can tell you that I am not on board with it, and I'm gonna tell you why. Our buildings are falling apart, I have said it and over and over again. The Graham Community Building is eighty-eight years old. It cost about twelve, oh, I'm sorry, it cost about twenty thousand dollars to build that building brand new in nineteen thirty-eight, plus five thousand dollars for furnishings for it, for City Hall. It was given to the city in nineteen thirty-eight, free and clear, by a city councilman at the time and a town benefactor. Moved forward to nineteen fifty-two, when Mr. Graham passed away, and in his long-drawn-out-of-state battle, they used the money to, part of the money, to purchase the PYO building for the youth of our community. And it was given, and it acted in that, that, uh, use for a long, long time. That building has gone to hell, and that's why it's in the condition it's in today, the PYO building. Now, fast forward again to nineteen sixty, as part of the Graham estate, they used the money to remodel that building as it looks today, with a minor few exchanges in the, in the, in the banquet hall, but they remodeled it to the way it looks today, so basically nineteen sixty was the, it was gutted and completely remodeled, so let's say fifty-eight, almost sixty, well, since nineteen sixty, that building has been, is, is, is the same as it was back then, and the city has not been putting any money in it to redo it. We know it's this kinda the centerpiece of our community building in town, it's used by the public, it looks terrible, the ki- the kitchen is condemned, we know it's gonna cost big money to fix that. The interior of the building looks terrible, the outside looks terrible. When we sold the gravel pit, which again was a gift to Mr. Graham too, I asked for that money to be put aside to fix that building, because we currently don't have it. This Graham money needs to fix Graham money, and we know damn well that we're gonna just sit there and just let it go and go and go, until we finally don't have any more money to fix it, and it's gone too far. Now we have this major gas leak, which is gonna cost some more money. I am all in favor of selling this building to Mr. Fogelman. But again, I want the money for this to be dedicated for the upkeep and perpetual care of remodeling that building, which is gonna need to be extra now for the, for the gas repair. Uh, the gas, you can't use the building right now, but, uh, it, there's no heat, and there's no heat in it. And if we don't fix it now, the money's just gonna keep, we're gonna use the money for other things, and the building's gonna be non-existent to be used if we don't start fixing our stuff. That's the problem with this city, this is the problem that I've been arguing about since I've been on this council. And if you don't put this money earmarked with the sale of the gravel pit for this, then you guys are just wasting away our buildings, and don't, and shows me that you all don't give a damn about fixing our stuff.
Do you have an estimate of how much it costs to bring the Graham Community Center up to where it needs to be? Have we ever gotten this, anyone?
No, no, there's a lot, so.
I mean, I thought the kitchen was over a hundred thousand.
It was five hundred thousand.
Just for the kitchen?
Just for the kitchen.
So are we going to be investing millions of dollars into this building? And I know Graham.
So let me, let me answer, let me answer your question, and then I wanna reply to Mr. Lamar. Um, and I have no intentions on, on getting into an argument over this.
If you want, I think you're probably safe.
So, the conversation was had, uh, what happens when we find this leak? Uh, and we, we determine that we have to cut a hole in the floor and run new pipes, right? Uh, there's a lot that may have to be brought up to, to code. These are, these are very old pipes, they're very old buildings, the electrical, uh, there's, there's probably a good reason that we, we, it's just old, we'll just say that, uh, there's a lot that will have to be. Uh, to Mr. Lamar's comment, um, I don't think for any second moment or, or inkling that there's anybody up here that disagrees with, uh, that we need to take care of our buildings. Uh, we all, we all appreciate the, the generosity of the families that gave us those buildings, the time and investment of their stuff. But I think what, what we need to do is instead of just running right in, because we got, you know, forty thousand from here, forty thousand from here, and saying, let's, let's fix it all immediately right now, we need to fix what we originally planned, and that's the, the first plan is to use the money from the gravel pit to fix the great hall, uh, and pick the grand hall, whatever, the banquet hall, whatever you wanna call it. Um, which I will say, Mr. Lamar and I did find, uh, blueprints where originally that was a theater house, and there were ticket booths, there's kind of a cool blueprint that we found from the thirties. Um, again, most know that that was fire station, it's been all kinds of modifications. Uh, we know that we have the arts and humanities group in there, um, and that they have agreements to, to some of the things that they're doing. Uh, but as we look at this, I think it would be wise for us to, to take what we make off of the sale of this, this or whatever we decide to put into that building, and, and make sure that we're, we're using it the right way. Make sure that, that if we're gonna invest eighty thousand, ninety thousand dollars into the building, that we're not opening a, a situation, maybe like Charles said, where uh, we've got two hundred thousand dollars worth of plumbing that's gonna have to be fixed, because it's all out of code, or, you know, we know for, for sure that that kitchen is gonna cost us at least a half a million to fix. Um, you know, conversations have been had, uh, does that building, you know, what, what do we do with that building, is that, you know, something where eventually that needs to, to be sold? We do need to take care of those, Terry, you and I've had that conversation quite a bit. I think we need to not let the money burn a hole in our pocket, though, and we need to, we need to make sure that we, we put it in the right place. Um, as we talked to Jeff, Jeff's, uh, Jeff's direct, um, instruction, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that those sales need to go to the sale of surplus account, um, this forty-one eighty-one account, that was where he needs it to be. Um, and so, you know, that's what we're doing, is we're following the advice of the accountant, and that's, that's where we're at. I, I'm saying loud and clear, though, as we have learned about this gas leak, which nobody wants to do that, nobody wanted to stand in that building for two hours yesterday while, uh, Jared's probably seen where they stick that silly-looking click and meter, trying to find it and make it click faster, we were up there quite a long time, trying to determine if it was sewer gas that we were smelling, or if it was natural gas. We weren't getting it right, tried again, tried again, tried again, and they were diligent in trying to find that, but now we've got to figure out by means of having somebody come in and look, a plumber, come in and say, okay, here's what the reality is. So until we know what that is, I'm gonna say, we've gotta sell this, on, on the, on the item here. We need to vote to put that money into that account, and that's where our accountant wants it, that's where it needs to be.
Our accountant won't even come give us a mid-year budget review eight months into the fiscal year.
Right, but that's not the item we're talking about right now.
Well, I know, but the point is, you were bringing up, the accountant said to do this, we can't even get him to come do his damn job and give us a mid-year budget review. What's gonna end up happening is that building is gonna set empty for, and, and not, and be in the same shape as the PYO if we don't start saving money, which this is free money to pay, to start putting back towards the repair of that.
We remind you that every penny that, that is spent out of that, you guys have to approve.
That's why I'm wanting to save it in the earmark for that, to make sure it's not gone away.
I agree a hundred percent, we talked about this at the beginning, we're gonna play the same game, Graham building that we played with PYO. We're not gonna do anything, we're gonna talk, we're gonna put it in account, we're gonna spend it somewhere else before long, we don't have the money, the building's gonna fall down. We need to commit tonight to put this money in the account for the Graham Community Building.
I disagree.
What is the reasoning from the accountant of why it needs to go in this account, and why it can't go into the account for the Graham building?
Because it is a sale of surplus, and that's.
Why, but, but why does the accountant care where that money goes in particular, I guess?
He said it would be best to go in that account and not to the general fund.
Right.
Which is, nobody here is asking for it to go to the general fund, to be clear, I believe both of these are asking.
No, wanted earmarked for the repairs.
And nobody's against, nobody's against the sale of the property, it's where the money's going once, once it's.
Exactly.
But I think what we have to, we have to look at is, that original account that was requested would have been an O-two triple zero account. So when we go and we do our budgeting, we would have lost ten percent of that. This, by putting it in the capital outlay, allows when we do our budget to roll the entire amount over if there's surplus. And so what Jeff is saying is, don't put it somewhere where you're gonna lose some, put it here, we still can control what we do with that. We're not, we're not here tonight to, to decide what we're doing with that account, what we're doing with, with the forty-five thousand. The agenda item tonight is, are we gonna sell the building or not?
Well, that is part of the agenda item, but the last agenda item is what accountant's gonna pay out to, and so I think that's up for discussion. Could it not be, could a forty-four account not be created for the, the Graham buildings?
It absolutely can be, we can, we can create in that forty-four different accounts that are there. And nobody's, nobody, be very clear, I'm gonna say me, and we've had this conversation aplenty, you and I, that we are all for taking care of that building, nobody's denying that, so an elevated level of frustration is, is, is a little frustrating, because the conversation we've had, we've, we've got to care for those buildings, we've got to keep it up. But at this point tonight, other than the hall needing, floors cleaned, walls replaced, and a gas leak that we don't know anything about, other than it's there, we can't commit that money to any specific repair, other than say, if you guys want it in that capital outlay, whatever, we can get Hannah to rename that too, um, that's what we need to do, but it needs to go to a capital outlay specific, um, so.
That's all I'm asking, is in the budget, there'd be a specific line item for capital outlay, whatever you wanna call it, but perpetual repair, upkeep on the Graham Community Building, that's all I ask. One line item, money in that account, and it's dedicated to that for the time being, until we decide what to do with it.
Did I make a, the motion? I did, didn't I?
Hannah, who had the motion, just a second?
Can, can I amend this to allow it to go through as is tonight with a, Chase? I want to add to my motion that it, it'd be discussed next council meeting about whether or not, we, we put a, an item on the agenda to discuss whether or not this money stays in this account, or whether or not it goes into another forty-four account created for Graham. But there's no reason, I, I don't agree, I, I don't disagree with Mr. Lamar or Mr. Smith, but there's no reason in holding this up tonight on an account that doesn't exist.
We can do it for after closing.
Is that, is that agreeable to you, that if we agree when we make our motion tonight, that it comes back up as soon as it's closed, about whether or not it's gonna stay in this capital account, or the other capital account that we can create for Graham, but it doesn't exist right now, so we couldn't list a number for it to go to? I'm all for it going in the Graham building, by the way, I'm, I'm, I do support that, but if the account doesn't exist, we don't.
Where we wanna put the money.
Yeah, if, but if the account doesn't exist, what are we doing tonight, we can't.
I, I am agreeable to that, yes.
That's what I'm saying, tonight, we're, we're voting to approve the sale. We can come back next, I don't have a problem, that's easy to do, we can bring that back, uh, for where it's gonna be, so we'll make, we'll add that to it.
I do have some questions for Mr. Fogelman, real quick.
And I do too.
Free, free press, tell us what you're gonna do with the building and when, and everything like that, what's your plan? Make sure Terry Alworth's ready to start jotting this down.
He's already got it.
Okay.
So we opened up the Ford Wagner, basically bought an old building, uh, it was a shell building and just kinda restored it, we, uh, started off the candy shop, we had arcade games, laser tag. Like a fun spot for kids, uh, kinda like the Incredible Pizza, but mom and pop style, a little, little more old school. So, and that's what we intend on doing, uh, I think the outside buildings, which I haven't been able to get inside to, to see all those, but I think I can turn one of those around pretty fast, within maybe three to six months, get it opened up and, you know, doing some sort of sales there, get some tax revenue in, while the, working on the main building's gonna take me a little bit longer. It's gonna probably take about a year or so to get that up and running, maybe longer than that, so it just depends on funds and what I find once I get in there and start working on it, so.
Can you put a Gallagher machine in there?
I've got one in Wagner, come on down.
And you, you have a plan for the mitigation of parking issues?
I do, uh, well, temporary one right now, so far we've talked to the school, they're okay with us parking there, most of our business, uh, like, so when we do events and parties and stuff like that, it's usually after hours, it's for mostly kids. So they're willing to let us park in their parking lot, you know, and help upkeep it for now, while we work on a more permanent solution, so.
So you, you're hoping some of your clientele ride bicycles, walk, or ride their skateboards down there?
I'm thinking about bike rides, that might be.
Have you turned around town recently, we got plenty of that.
I know, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, um, so what, uh, is the plan for the storefronts? You, you already have potential, or you're just gonna remodel them for potential retail?
Initially, I'd like to use the first one, uh, just so we can get it opened up and running, start generating some kind of revenue. Uh, and then we've talked to some businesses already, trying to recruit businesses to come in there and take it over, so once we get in and see what we got, we'll encourage other businesses to come in.
And you've been in touch with the, the commercial building code person?
Yes, that's the person.
And he's got full cooperation from him so far?
Yes.
You don't foresee any problems with the commercial building code person coming in and saying, well, hey, you've got a business here that's gonna have so many people, so you're required to have so many parking spaces? Like that has been done with other businesses?
We went through a lot of that, and then the, the school could accommodate those parking, if that was an issue.
Okay.
And, like I said, most of our business will be after school hours anyway, uh, the six spaces, it's there now, will accommodate most of our day traffic. Now, once we get other businesses up front, depending on what kind they are, there may be a higher traffic volume, I don't know what that's gonna look like yet, but it's a problem that we'll be working on, so.
I wanna commend you for taking this on and trying to breathe life back into that building. As you well know, that building has been, uh, it's, it's, it's a cinema, it's, it's, it's a big sentimental thing to a lot of people in this town, they really care about it, and doesn't wanna see it. They'd hate to see it deteriorated to the way it is today, but they don't wanna see it torn down either, and the, the city's gone on, it's been a hot potato for years on what to do with it, and I really am commending you for jumping in there and taking that on to try to bring it back to life, and, uh, and to help the community out.
It's a beautiful building, it's got a lot of.
It is.
Just a lot of work.
It does.
And I'd like to add to that. Nothing we do in, in the town, buildings, anything, uh, is worth anything without people, and you are investing in people. Most notably, wh- whom we would consider the most innocent among us are, are the kids, and, uh, so thank you for, there, there's been a lot of, uh, statements online all over the place about there's nothing to do for kids in Pryor, this, that, and the other, and well, somebody is finally stepping up to do that, so, thank you for doing that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I need to amend my motion to make sure that we, it reflects that we will revisit where the disbursement of the funds will be upon closing, how's that sound? And then we can work on an account in the background.
Hannah, when you're ready to call for the vote.
So, who seconded it?
I did, I'll, I'll, uh, go on.
Good, thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, we're ready.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
MC, discussion of, starting an offer from Branch Tower. Your E. Communication. Three-one North Elliott Street, and all related assets, improvements, including the property collectively, the app, via Pryor, create the seller in exchange for a hundred and seventy-seven thousand in immediately available funds. Funds will be deposited in the certificate of deposit investment fund, account number to be determined on.
Motion.
Motion from Charles and Bashir's?
So, I've done some Adam about, I think it was yesterday, Adam, and I, it, it seems to me that the, the, the amount we're getting a little bit low, given the, the, the life of the lease, so I would not take action on this. And we turn this project over to the EDTA, and let Adam and his team go out and see if, if indeed we are getting the right price, or if we couldn't even get a better price.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Motion from Charles, is that how that worked?
Well, I think it was a motion. I made the motion and then Brishers, I think, seconded it. And then I.
I can amend that for that, yeah.
So the motion was to send it to the EDTA for, for the review.
The recommendation, not the motion, but the recommendation is to not take action and send it to the EDT.
There's going to be a motion.
For the, no action?
Well, but we're not. We're not really taking no action. We are taking action. We're sending it to the EDT.
Okay, so send it to the EDT, okay.
Yes.
Here we go.
We have a motion and a second on that.
You confused yet?
Add that to your, to the Monday, right?
Yes.
We're just keeping you busy.
Okay.
I like this volunteer job.
All right, further discussion for you.
I, I, I do, I would, I would be curious, I'm not saying we would, I'm not saying we wouldn't, but while they're looking at this, I would be curious if they would consider the contract as a whole and make sure we're getting the best value for the contract. Maybe we are, maybe that contract needs to end and we need to find a new person for it. I don't know, but I think that we should really, if we're going to go out on it, we need to make the scope broad enough that we're encompassing everything that we can.
So I agree, but I mean, just so everybody knows, I think Mayor has worked quite a bit on this, and I think Hannah's worked a little bit on it, getting the records from the previous clerk and everything. So, you know, we'll work between now and the EDTA meeting to get as much information as we can and get it into a, a presentation form to talk about there, and, and see where all those, those numbers and stuff lie. You know, we've done some quick calculations too, with investment, you know, and over the treasurer there, so we'll, we'll talk with her and have a, a full analysis of it as quickly as we can to make a decision to either do something else, do this, or, or continue with what it's going as.
And let me be, let me be clear, just for council clarification. Bringing this to the, to the agenda tonight was, Branch has been pretty persistent in wanting to see some, do something. And it's been, I would say, almost well over a year, year and a half, we've been going back and forth. Chase has looked at, looked at everything, validated that we're good to move forward on it. Really, the direction tonight's thought was what the council wants to do going forward with it. I have absolutely no problem passing it off to the ETA. We've passed off all our other contracts and sales on those properties and things. And so, this is to get council input on, on where to go with that. So thank you, Charles. Further discussion?
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Okay. Smith? Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to the addendum, item one, discussion and possible action regarding an expenditure in the amount of 7,678.35 Dell for nine OptiPlex Micro Form Factor Desktops, 720, nine Dell 27-inch monitors, and nine Dell Micro AAO stands to be paid from Library State Aid Account, 929255233.
Motion.
A motion from Brown and a second from Shropshire. I'd like Terry to come up. This is the item that we took no action on last meeting because the money hasn't been in yet.
Right, so we have the money now. It is state contract pricing, which is why we don't have any more bids. But, due to new tariffs, we have some wrinkles in this proposal. I don't know if I will be able to follow through with this tonight. I got a call at 4:30 from Dell that our quote will expire at 6:00 AM tomorrow, and that the monitors on this quote are not currently in stock. So, if I can approve the quote, if you guys say yes, we may be stuck waiting on monitors until they come back in stock, which is not a huge deal. But if they won't let the approval go through, because the monitors are not in stock, we will have to go back for another quote, and it could be, I think the, the tariff in China is now 10%. So, so that's where we are. I'm going to try.
Don't they still have to honor state contract price, since it's a contract?
Well, the contract will go up, state contract.
I'm just telling you what my Dell guy said, so.
So what you're asking is, a little bit of grace as you look into what.
Right, so if it comes back, that's why it's going to come back, is because everything kind of went haywire, and there was lots of chaos at Dell today, so.
Same thing will happen to those police lights, because it's all electronics come from China.
You're, you're paying out of your State Aid account. Is that a, a grant account, or is that?
It is a grant account, yes.
And do you know how much is in there?
Just over $9,000.
So could we approve this with an amount not to exceed?
So basically, if you could get, if you could get five for the amount, as opposed to seven, or what was it, nine?
If you could do all of it, but we just give you the amount not to exceed whatever's in the account.
I don't.
You don't want to spend it. You, you, we're opening the entire account for you to spend on this up to this amount. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
You have the ability, autonomy to make the decision you want to make, but the entire account is open up to you to spend up to X amount. Does that?
Up to 9,000 whatever, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And so then you don't have to bring it back.
Correct.
Okay, that's lovely.
Then you just move forward, because then the, the purchase order will come back. We'll, we'll approve the purchase order on it for whatever payment it is at that time.
You're just temporarily giving her more authority than normal.
Yeah, for the specific purpose.
Yep. Sweet, hang on one second.
Make it like 8,500, or nine, or whatever. I mean, seeing how your budget has been doing as the year has gone on, I, I think you're probably more than trustworthy.
Oh my gosh, yeah.
Okay, so the official amount for our state aid this year is $9,101 and zero pennies.
What if we just said 9100, an amount not to exceed? I don't know who made the motion, but that's got to be more than enough, but it should allow you to do what you need to do.
If it's not more than enough, we're going to.
I don't know who made the motion, but maybe if you want to consider an amount.
I mean, honestly, if we have to wait for the monitors to come in stock, like if it, if, you know, after you guys say yes, I'm going online and I'm going to hit the button. And if it lets me do that and we just have to wait, we have monitors that we can use. We're just trying to cycle them through, you know? So it's not a big deal if we have to wait. The only problem is if they don't let it go through tonight, then I'm just going to rethink it. Do we need those monitors? Do we need the stands? Like, we need the computers, because the PCs that we're replacing are Windows 10, and they cannot update to Windows 11, and Windows 10 is about to end of life, so.
Terry, can we look at different?
We might be able to. I, just for ease of, I, I am the IT staff at the library, and so for my peace of mind and my troubleshooting, whenever I have to go work on a computer, if I don't have to remember the difference between HP and Dell, it makes my life a little bit easier. And almost every other computer in the building is a Dell. So, I'm not super brand loyal, but it is state contract pricing, so. Like, it's definitely a thought. Like, if it, if it, if this price goes up way mu, like a whole bunch, I'm not going to, I don't want to spend $9,000 on nine computers and nine monitors, so.
So can we have a, and a, change that motion to as written with the caveat not to exceed?
I'm trying to play with your leg there.
9,000.
Because your number doesn't match my number.
9,000?
What's in?
8200.
In the account?
92.
929255233.
So you're going to look in the zero zero account, not the 92, 925 account? And it may not have hit it yet. Like, literally, we got.
That's what I was telling him, it doesn't show.
We got the, we got the email that it was sent over electronically, like, I got it Saturday.
Yeah.
So.
This isn't showing yet.
Yeah, Lori may not, Lori may not have seen it yet.
Okay, well.
Who made the motion?
Can we?
Who made the motion?
I did. So I, I will amend mine with an amount not to exceed $9,000.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay. That's awesome, thanks guys.
Can we do that if it's not showing? Problem solvers.
Okay, call for the vote.
Thank you.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Discussion on possible action regarding accepting the resignation of Sierra Brown from the position of dispatcher at Pryor Creek Police Department effective March 7th, 2025. So.
Sir.
We have a motion from Smith, second from Choya, call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Discussion on possible action regarding allowing the Pryor Creek Police Department to accept applications to fill dispatcher position at the Pryor Creek Police Department to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Sierra Brown.
Motion.
Second.
A motion from Choya and a second from Brown. Discussion.
So we had, we.
If you lose one, you got to replace one. I mean, that's kind of where you're at. You're pretty much bare bones now, huh?
Correct, we're down to five, and then you go down to four, and then we're pulling patrol.
Do you still have some off on, like, return to leave or something?
We'll see back now, but we, six is where we need, we had seven when I started, and that's what I spoke to Mary earlier. Seven when we started, we moved one to records and put it to six, and that's as low as we can go as far as continuing the full coverage like we have to do.
Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Possible executive session regarding the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Pryor and the FOP Lodge 16, 25307B2.
Motion.
A motion from Brishers?
Second.
Second from Brown. Call for the vote.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes. Yes.
Consider resuming regular session, no action taken during executive session. When you're ready, call for the vote.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brashir?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Good. Possible action based on executive session regarding collective bargaining agreement between the City of Prior Creek and the FOP Lodge 116.
Make a motion of no action.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion from Brashir, second from Bradshaw. Call for the vote when you're ready.
Brashir?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Committing reports, budget personnel, Levitt. Ordnance insurance. I think there's still to be determined on that.
April 30th is the fifth, or April something is the fifth Tuesday in April, next one.
I didn't mean it was January 29th.
Twenty-nine. Yeah, yeah, twenty-nine. Yeah, you're good.
Uh, street maintenance.
Twenty-fifth.
Uh, unforeseeable, we have none at this point. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
I have a motion from Brashir and a second from Smith. When you're ready, call for the vote.
Brashir?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw? Yes.
Okay, we'll call to order the Prior Public Works Authority. Uh, item two, approve the minutes of the February 25, 2025 special meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Brashir, second from, uh, Choya. Call for the vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brashir's?
Yes.
No unforeseeable, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, we, uh...
We skipped the claims, oh, purchase orders.
Oh, my gosh, I did.
I'll pull my motion.
I was putting my tally marks right next to it.
You're good.
Y'all, it's been a long day, I apologize. Item three, approve the claims for purchase orders for the Prior Public Works Authority through March 4th, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
A motion from Brashir, second Choya. Call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw? Yes.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay, back to that adjourn, do I got a motion?
Motion.
Motion from Brashir's.
I'll second.
Second from Choya, call for the vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brashir's?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.